Good evening, welcome to the Willow's Planning Commission Special Meeting, May 20th, 2025. I called this meeting to order at 6:04. We'll begin with the flag of religion. Everyone please stand.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. By nation under God.
All right, moving on to roll call.
Vice Chair Valencia.
President.
Commissioner Brock. Commissioner Coram. Commissioner Ocampo.
Absent.
And Chair Bobadilla is absent.
I'm here, right?
Moving on to public comment, individuals wishing to address the city council concerning the planning commission training are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the chair and commissioners and not to staff and for the army by state law. The commission is not permitted to undertake any action or expression on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentation that you would like distributed to the planning commission, please mail to the City Clerk at 201 North Laszlo Street, Willow's, California 9598, or email at two city clerk@cityofwillow.com. Closing public comment at 6:05 and moving on to planning commission training.
Good evening, commissioners. Thanks for showing up and taking the time out of your day to complete this training. I think it'll be a good opportunity to get everybody refreshed or in the know about roles responsibilities. Thanks to Harrison Associates for coming down and putting this all together for us. It's much appreciated and I think long overdue. Just want to touch on our June agenda coming up. We don't have, we don't currently have anything on the agenda except for reviewing our municipal codes. We're going to do both of those at the same time, the continuation from last month and the final review before our July meeting. I didn't want to do that today because I kind of wanted to reserve this all for training. And then one thing we will have coming up in the near future, if applications are successful will be the conditional use permit for the cannabis business license applications. So again, I think this is a really good time for the training is that's kind of a more controversial topic that has a lot of legal language surrounded on it. So most likely that'll be coming in the July meeting and we'll get you information on that as soon as possible for you guys review and consideration. And with that, I'll pass it over to Delaney and Amy from Harrison Associates.
All right, we're getting the PowerPoint up to give you some visuals. But just to introduce ourselves, I'm Delaney Garlic. I'm a senior planner with Harrison Associates and I also have Amy.
Hi, I'm Amy Rossig. I'm a planner four with Harrison Associates.
And we function as contract planners for City of Willow, so you'll get familiar with our faces as we attend these meetings in person and we also provide support to Joe and Marty on the backend as well. So although you might not see us here day to day, we are definitely part of that day to day operation. Just to kind of do some level setting for today's presentation, we can go to the next slide. This is going to be high level overview. There's a range of experience and background here on your current commission. So today we're hoping just to kind of give you a nice level playing field. And then we want to also field some questions and comments from you so that we can maybe come back for, you know, follow up or any more additional information that you would like. So there's a lot to cover. We're going to, you know, like I said, stay high level and then get some of that feedback from you. So we could maybe deep dive on questions that you might have later on. We broke it down into three parts today. So the first part here, we're going to talk a little bit about planning framework. This is helpful in understanding how the work, no, you're great. And then we'll get into sort of the practice of the planning commission kind of roles, best practices, and then the legality. So things like the Brown Act and things of that nature. Next. All right. So getting into the planning framework, this is sort of a California approach. The, we're going to begin with the land use planning in California. This is guided by a mix of state law, local plans and community input. Your role as commissioners sits at the intersection of all these elements. So the general plans, specific plans, zoning ordinance and other planning documents. Next. All right. And then to get into general plans, this is really the blueprint for the future development of your city. Every city must have one of these. It's a mandate by state law. It includes required elements such as housing, land use, safety and more. You also see things like circulation, open space. And this will provide some of the framework for the consistency as we review projects. So we're going to rely on your policy document to help with kind of understanding consistency, compatibility, things of that nature. Next. Getting into zoning. So zoning, on the other hand, is more of the implementation side of your general plan. Essentially, it tells us what can go where. The zoning code regulates the land use, the development standards. It also outlines findings of fact that need to be made to approve or deny a project. You can kind of think of the zoning as the kind of the laws, the codes, the requirements, and then your general plan as sort of that guiding vision, that guiding policy document. And we want to bring those two together when we're reviewing a project and coming to a recommendation. One, is this in alignment with sort of the overall policy, the overall vision? And two, is it meeting those development standards and requirements? Your zoning is also going to help kind of dictate how the city is laid out. It's going to specify specific uses, how those uses work together or how we maybe want to separate them. A good example is you might not want to put a residential zone right next to an industrial corridor for health, public safety, those kinds of reasons. So the way that the city is zoned is really going to help kind of tell us where things should go, how tall they should be, how far setback they should be, definitely based on the specific land use that we're looking at. So that's sort of how conceptually you can think of the zoning. Next. This is now getting into SEQA. So this is another very important element in reviewing development in California. All applications are subject to the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. This ensures that we evaluate the environmental impacts before approving projects. It's really about transparency and minimizing harm or environmental damage. It balances the development with sustainability. Goals of SEQA are to inform decision makers about environmental impacts and to identify ways to avoid those significant environmental impacts. Next. This I'll break down and again, I'll keep it somewhat high level. Kind of the variety of SEQA documents that you may come across from very simple exemptions, which a lot of projects will meet. Especially in kind of the city core, you think of infill, a lot of those can meet either categorical exemptions or statutory exemptions. And as a planner, I think we always try to find that exemption first. That is a path of least resistance. We have these things laid out in a SEQA guideline. Those exemptions help us find streamlined ways to review projects without having to do a full, you know, environmental review. Going down to the kind of next option, if the site is subject, there's not, you know, an exemption that can fit the proposed project or the proposed site. We look at can we do a negative declaration? This would say we've taken time, we've reviewed the site specifically, we look for if there's any environmental impacts. We might even ask for a few technical studies. So maybe we're concerned about a protected tortoise species, something like that. Elderberry, yes. So we might get a biologist out to the site. We'll have the applicant, hire biologist, we get that technical study back. If that study comes back and says, hey, there is no significant impact to the elderberry bush. We can go, great, we checked that box. We confirmed with the specialist out in the field. We have a technical study to back up our claims. Now we have a negative declaration. We're stating, we're putting on the record that we declare there is no negative environmental impact based on the site and the proposed project. Now, in some cases, we might move into a mitigated negative declaration. What that means is we've maybe done a technical study or there's a VMT analysis, which is vehicle miles traveled, or maybe there's a noise, something that is a significant impact. However, the project is willing and able to implement some kind of mitigation. That could be a sound wall. That could be different strategies to lower vehicles mile traveled. So we do the technical studies, we determine, yes, we did find an actual significant impact, but we've also found a way or a means to mitigate that impact. So we bring it down to less than significant. So mitigated NEGDEC for short would be kind of the third option on the table. Now, if we get to a project where maybe it's a large scale site, there are impacts there that simply cannot be mitigated for. It could be, you know, the environmental impact here, no matter what mitigation strategies we implement, there's still a significant impact to whatever that species is or the noise or the VMT, there's kind of different categories where we're looking at all of them as a whole. So in that event, that would be an environmental impact report. So that's going to be very much in depth. It's kind of a legally defensible document that says, hey, we've reviewed everything in whole. We understand that this development will have a significant impact, but even knowing that we're still saying, hey, the development might still be necessary to be put in this location. So that gives you kind of high level. I would say most of what you're going to be coming across your desk here in Willow's is probably in those top two categories. But just to be mindful, these are all kind of the options that we have to look at and analyze before we bring something to a hearing body. We want that SEQA determination happening upfront, early on in the process, one, to keep the applicant informed of what they should expect. And two, we don't want to get into a situation where the city would be sued for not following SEQA. Next. And this is kind of all shifted over to Amy. She'll get into more of kind of the practices and best practices of planning commission. If you have, yeah, if you guys want, this is very informal. We don't have to wait till the end. So if you have any questions about what I covered, I'd be happy to.
Do appreciate that information on SEQA.
SEQA.
I wasn't aware of.
Levels, yeah, and. Yeah. Yeah. So we like to do that scoping early on, like Joe was saying, it helps inform the applicant, you know, is this something they're willing to proceed with? And then it also kind of helps us ensure early on, we're looking out for those things. And like I said, as a planner, no matter what, you know, city or jurisdiction or whoever you're working with, I do think that the goal is to find that path of least resistance. So we have all these categorical exemptions that say, hey, if this is an infill site, meaning was this property already developed at some point in time? It's already been disturbed. We don't anticipate something here. Let's take that exemption and not have to go through this onerous process of doing the technical studies. So that's always been the Harris kind of approach is we do look for those exemptions whenever possible.
There, from my understanding, there is a preliminary SEQA and a full blown SEQA. So explain the difference on that. Because the preliminary or shortened version doesn't cost that much compared to a full blown one.
Yeah, I think I understand your question. I'm thinking the full blown as like an EIR. Is that what we're talking about? Yeah, definitely. So definitely that first, the categorical exemption, you're normally getting away with not having to do any technical studies. We could determine by the site, the proposed project, the history of the site. We have an exemption available to us, we're going to take it. Now, if we're in a NEGDEC, mitigated NEGDEC or an EIR, we at least need some technical studies to inform the environmental potential impact. The, you know, a smaller, like what you're mentioning, the preliminary SEQA is going to be more of that NEGDEC, mitigated NEGDEC. Maybe we need two studies. Maybe we're only concerned about the elderberry bush and we just wanted to ensure that the development's either going to avoid that bush or they're going to mitigate for it, meaning if they have to remove it, it's right in the middle of the design that they're going to replace it or pay a fee or mitigation fee to replace it or move it. Now, if we're talking to full blown EIR, we are doing a traffic impact analysis. We're doing all these technical studies from noise to visual aesthetics to bio to cultural. We're going to have to consult with the native tribes. They're going to have a chance to go out to the site and tell us, hey, we got first dibs here to say, is there any cultural significance? And that's called tribal consultation. That really only comes up when we get into that larger scale SEQA review. And it's an important kind of measure that we have to take. And, you know, I don't think City of Willow is really going to come across that, but it's really good for you to be aware, like these are the scopes and scales of how these projects can evolve. They can start as a small thing or they can really grow into these massive.
If it is really big, then who determines that everything was that? Who makes that final determination that it'll be very useful?
Yeah. So we're going to rely on certified experts, meaning biologists, certified biologists or an arborist or cultural archaeologist, somebody out there who is going to put their stamp on a study or a report and that report is going to document that site in the unique, you know, species or whatever they end up finding. Now, it is going to end up being the city's document. So the city is going to say, we we trust that this biologist that was hired was approved and that the information they provided is accurate. So ultimately, the city will take responsibility for the SEQA document, but it's going to be those individual, you know, consultants or companies who are providing that information. Now, if that gets into, let's say, litigation down the road and someone challenges that bio report, well, guess who's on the hot seat? It's that biologist. So they have stuff at stake. They're not there to, you know, not provide accurate information, but everyone sort of has a stake in the game. But at the end of the day, the city has to accept that document and say, yes, we agree. So one thing we do at Harris, and we do this for other jurisdictions, is if an applicant submits, let's say, a technical study, we have our own in-house folks, like we have our own biologists and our own archaeologists and we're planners. We have, you know, the different groups. We'll have them peer review to say, does this, does this pass the sniff test? Does this feel like they captured everything that you would expect if you did a site visit and did the full bio report? So internally, we like to do a peer review before we certify, yes, we're behind this document. So that's one way we can check those things. Yeah. Correct. So CDFW will also comment. So essentially what would happen is we get the technical studies. We put together, everything altogether is called an initial study and that initial study covers those categories, correct? So the initial study really comes into play for the NEGDEC, mitigated NEGDEC or EIR. And in that initial study, it's going to have all the technical studies that were required to make a decision on significant impacts. And then we would then submit to what's called the SEQUA net, which is run by the state. So it goes to the state clearinghouse where then it's released for a public review period. During that review period, the other agencies such as CDFW, Caltrans, CHP, anyone who wants to comment on that, they will comment on that. Environmental groups, they will comment on that, who are not, you know, formal agencies, stakeholders, members of the public. So not only would your CUP that's associated with that document go out for public review for a hearing, you also have this environmental document that's separate and subject to public comment as well. So it's sort of a two-part piece and you definitely get that SEQA review and public comment period done before we're in front of a hearing body. Then I could bring it to you and say, we did our public comment, we put this out for 30-day review. These are the comments we got back. We addressed those by X, Y and Z. We're here today to say, we feel confident in the SEQA determination in this document and we recommend that you vote for approval because we've covered all our bases. So that's how you would typically see it come about.
And then it's up to like different agencies to read that review.
Yeah, they get separately noticed, but it does go out to a state clearinghouse that does kind of a wide net and they post it kind of on the internet as well. You do, yeah. Yeah. Or if you have wetlands, you know, like if there's potential habitat, so maybe there isn't that snake there, but it, the site has the habitat to potentially allow for that snake to be there. That could be like, you need to mitigate. You need to either. So SEQA could get kind of hairy because it's sometimes like, oh, the biologist didn't find anything, but man, did he find a perfect nesting spot for that burrowing owl that we didn't see out there, but potentially could be there. So if there's a potential for something, we almost have to consider as if it's there. So. Yes. And that's kind of hard to do with moving animals and creatures that migrate and do different.
Just for reference, my SEQA experience comes from the government side because when we do projects, we also have to have this compliance. So when we go and we're going to dredge the river, you know, I think it was the yellow belt, two, two and a couple other species, but we've got to say this is not an area, you've got to go through a process of it. So I have to fill out a exemption when I apply for a grant, when I turn in paperwork saying this doesn't affect the environment.
Yeah.
So it's always, you're having to do it a lot. Sometimes it's really easy, sometimes.
Yeah, it's very case by case. Yeah, exactly.
Would I be correct in saying if all that's done and it comes to the planning commission and the planning commission feels an EIR is needed, then we can deny that version and ask for a full EIR.
Yes, you could. You'd want to definitely come with, you know, a strong case for why, because that applicant could push back and go, I'm going to appeal this and then, you know, it can end up in that back and forth. But yes, as the commission, not only are you voting for that entitlement, you're also certifying that, yes, this project is exempt from SEQA or we adopt the mitigated NEGDEC as prepared or we don't agree with it and we want you to go back and provide more studies or do additional things because we did, the commission felt or they got enough public comments in that kind of alluded to some maybe errors. And to cover your bases, you might say, hey, we want those errors, you know, to be explored or researched more and come back to us with a response to that. So you definitely have a little more power there and saying, hey, we're not ready to adopt this yet because there's some questions. So that is something up to you to make that call. Okay. Well, we'll transition into kind of more nuts and bolts of planning commission. I'll let Amy take over for a few minutes.
Great. So there are two kinds of projects that would be brought before you at the planning commission. One is a long-range planning project. That would be like if your general plan gets updated or your housing element gets updated, those are two things required by state law. Those will come before you at the planning commission. The other option is current planning projects. Those are when a developer comes in, they own this property and they want to develop it with some specific type of use. So that would come before you. So with long-range planning projects, your role is to review it at a public hearing and then you would make any recommendations and then ultimately it would go to county or city council, excuse me, for approval. So you would be providing a recommendation for those long-range planning projects. This is a legislative action that allows the city to shape policy and government regulations. And so that's where your general plan and your housing element would allow for that. So the second type of project is current planning. These projects are brought before you on an individual development basis. In this case, your approval is quasi judicial, which is it means when there are specific findings that have to be made and those findings are outlined, outlined in your municipal code. So when we bring a project before you in your staff report, we outline all of those findings that have to be made. And it's really important that we stick to all of those findings that are listed and we're not allowed to deviate from those findings. In some cases, you, as planning commission, may be interpreting law, you may be interpreting what those findings are, but your decisions do affect individual rights and individual obligations. This decision, this type of decision, quasi judicial, I'm so sorry. It's different than if you were, say, on the city council or the board of supervisors. When you're in those roles, those decisions may be subjective and they could be based on political opinions and perspectives. Whereas in your role as planning commission, it's specific to those findings that we outline. Next slide. So in this, in your role as planning commission, all of you have a role and the chair is primarily responsible for managing the meeting. I know we don't have a chair.
Yeah, this could be any of you in the future. So.
Yep, in the future, any of you want. So you're managing the floor, you're managing public comment. You're managing also the commissioner's discussion and kind of playing a role in managing the overall meeting. But as each commissioner, your role is to make a decision. You'll gather and evaluate the facts that are brought before you and make findings and then apply the standards outlined by the municipal code. So as a decision maker, one of your biggest jobs is to propose a motion and this motion will be the ultimate decision for that project. This happens when after staff has presented an item. The applicant then is allowed to go up to the podium and provide their feedback. Then the chair will open the floor up for public comment. Anyone that's in the audience may come up to the podium and speak. Do you all allow Zoom comments? Or, okay, all right. So anyone that's there present in the audience is allowed to come up. They're allowed to provide any feedback that they have on that specific item that's before you. Then the chair will close the public comment. That is important to just allow for the it to come back to the commission and the commission can just themselves discuss the project that's at hand. After you're discussing the item, someone on the commission can propose a motion. Now, the motion that I have here on the screen, it's set up by the Roberts Rule of Order, which you all may be familiar with. This is a pretty standardized way to run a meeting and how to bring a motion forward. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. All right. That's why we're doing this tonight is to like.
This might be a little more structured than you're used to or a little more stringent, but I think it will probably still follow that same flow. But yeah, we can, we can maybe gear some more resources towards the Rosenberg. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't even, I didn't realize that. So I'm learning too. Yeah, that's great. So we'll kind of continue with the Roberts rules, but it will kind of follow that same general flow. This might just have a little more structure of like asking the chair to make the motion, like a little more of that, you know, back and forth and formality. Yeah.
Yeah. No, no, you're good.
It's modified that we're doing that for, for, sorry, that maybe we want to change that with our code update. You know, so it's maybe a good intro into here's the more stringent standard. Do we think this is a better format than what we're currently doing?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I like it. So more stringent rule is that somebody would ask to have the floor from the chair. So the chair is also, as we discussed, the ultimate controller of the meeting. So somebody would ask, I would like to make a motion. The chair acknowledges that they would like to make a motion and then they could say, I would like to make a motion to approve this project, subject to the conditions of approval found in the staff report and the findings that are in the staff report, which basically means everything that staff provided, we agree with, we're ready to move forward. We would like to approve this project. Then someone else would say, I make a second. And then the chair would open it up to the commission for debate. If anybody doesn't feel that way, that's their opportunity to discuss why. If no one wants to debate it, then the chair would close the, I guess, the debate period, the discussion period, and then they would move, the chair would ask if everyone is ready for a vote.
Yep. Usually the only time either Rosenberg Rule of Order or any rule of order comes into play is if somebody thinks something hasn't been done correctly.
But there, there is, there's little differences though. Because on the school board, we follow the Robert rules. Came here, I don't, I don't even remember what it was, but somebody said, oh no, we don't follow it. Cause I didn't understand why that happened.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. And then do you mind going to the next slide? Yeah, so this is like maybe where it is more formal, where the chair would then take a vote and then you would say, they would say, all those in favor, say aye. Everyone would say aye. All those opposed, say no. You say no, and then anyone who abstains for any particular reason, if you have some sort of conflict of interest or you would want to, just for whatever reason abstain from taking a vote and you would say that in that particular moment. Uh, next slide please. And then this is important because it's just good for the record, um, especially since these meetings are recorded for the chair, just to say what the vote is. They would say the motion carries all those that were in favor. The project is approved. So this is an image that we found that we thought was a really great image of kind of what your role as the planning commissioners, you see kind of the tip of the iceberg at this point. Staff has already reviewed the project, vetted it, made sure that it conforms with the zoning standards. And so you'd get to see kind of the nice, pretty part of it, but there's so much more that happens behind the scenes. So before the hearing, we would, as staff, review the project. We provide feedback to the applicant. We gather a lot of comments from different departments, whether that be like fire department, the water department, sewer department, building department, all that fun stuff. And we gather all of those comments and we provide it to the applicant. Usually they have to review the project, come back to us. Sometimes we have to do this dance a couple of times. Uh, we also reach out to nearby property owners, depending on what the requirements are. Um, and we ask them for their input if they have any. Um, I worked on a project, it was a commercial property and the neighbor didn't like how close the trees were. So they asked us to space the trees out more because they had a commercial property next door and they were afraid that the trees were going to cover some of their signage. So it's like little things like that, that we can take into consideration during this part of the process where we can try to help out managing also the neighbors' concerns with the project's concerns. Yes?
What is the notification, um, distance for the city?
Uh, I believe it's 300 feet. It can be 400 usually or 300. I believe we have a 300 foot requirement.
That's probably adequate for the city and the county. We expanded it because 300 feet would come up to the next property line. They were really concerned. And so not only did we change it, we encouraged our staff to look at it a little differently that if somebody was really close to even 500 feet, just go ahead and send them the information.
Yeah. And again, that's another thing with code update, I'm just going to care everything towards that. Get ready to do our doing stuff, you know, if you feel that, wow, maybe we should have a 400, but radius, there's more letters, more effort. But yeah, 300 foot is our, is our codified standard.
Yeah, that's typical.
Yep.
That's what I was just curious, what's typical?
Three, you see three to 400 depending, um, we actually just looked into this, um, because at some point we were sending 400 letters in the past, then 300, and it's listed as 300 in there. And basically through parcel quest, we can go on there, pick our, pick our parcel and then set a buffer to 300 feet and it picks up every address. Care about send those notices out to people that touches the corner of the parcel. They get, yeah, so if it, if it's edge to edge, all around 300 feet, it covers edge to edge of, if it touches it a little bit, so it is an all encompassing 300.
Radius, yeah.
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 Yeah, yeah. So we, we would log in and it gives us information like the parcel number, stuff like that. Once we click that, which was new to me and it's very interesting and you're able to set buffers, you can set mile speed, whatever. So plug it in and then it gives you all the addresses, um, that that touches it. But it is a very, very comprehensive 300 feet. You've got a parcel that's this big, it goes from edge out that 300 feet, not just the center line.
So at the hearing, um, staff, we're here to be a resource for you. So please ask us any questions that you have about the project. You can always contact, contact us before the hearing and ask us any questions. If you decide that you've read the staff report and you don't agree with the direction and the recommendation that staff's going in, and you think that you would want to propose a different motion, that's maybe not in agreement with the findings and the conditions of approval, um, talk to us beforehand. We might have to get, um, legal involved and just talk about what that motion would look like and what that could be. But we're definitely here to be a resource for you and a tool, so that way the hearing can go smoothly. Yeah. No.
We proposed to Joe or, okay, Joe would tell you what our.
And we really are, sometimes it's unavoidable that stuff comes in late, but we, we are going to try to get stuff out to you as early as possible and that way they give you time to digest, ask those questions. Sometimes it's unavoidable, but the earlier you have the information, the more time you're going to get to go through it, right? So, um, we're working on getting it out as early as possible. It's, it's a process and we're getting better.
Yeah. And then one more point is to stay within the four corners of the project. So the applicant may come in and say, in five years, I want to do this grandiose expansion, but that's not the item that's before you that night. So you can't hold the applicant to those, uh, particular items. So whatever is before you and what the project's description is, it's important to know that that is what you are approving that day at the hearing. Yes?
Well, we found out out of the county, and I don't know how Harrison does it, uh, people generally only bring in part of what they want to do. And then later they want to do something else, but they have to go through the same process to do that again. So we tried to encourage the applicant to bring in their master plan, even though it wasn't going to be developed immediately, but to get it all planned, uh, and approved, then they don't have to come back. All they have to do is go buy their permits.
Yeah, yeah. We would definitely recommend that with developers when we're talking to applicants, you know, oh, I want to do a future phase two or three. Great, let's just wrap it all in and maybe we don't have all the details of the design review, but maybe we get the, the use permit to cover all these uses and then you come back with your design review element later, right? So that is definitely the recommendation from our end is we want to know the full picture, the full scope and scale, because then you're stuck coming back with these, you know, use permit modifications and those do have to come back in front of a commission.
Right. Right.
Which, I mean, applies to the top.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, so the, our previous planners, I think the issue with that was with, I was, you know, telling, we don't, we don't need to go to that level unless, if you have full plans and specifications in a phased project, and that's, that's what official quarters got speaking to on that, that's, you know, okay, we could phase this. We've got projects like that that you'll be seeing in the near future where, well, 725, where he did a hotel, um, do apartment conversion and then was going to come back and do the triplex. He just recently got approved for the triplex and that was, you know, two years afterwards. Um, but not if the, and even if they do come with plans and specifications and it's a conditional use permit, correct, if I'm wrong on this, and you can, you can make that condition, hey, we're good with this piece of it, but we want to see the steps to phase two within two to three years. So we're going to set an annual review to check the progress on that and then have the power to make modifications to that conditional use permit that you kind of stated you were going to do this and never move forward.
But we can hold them to it?
You would be able to, go ahead.
As if, if you properly condition the, the application to put in those timelines or timeframes, that's probably your best bet is, is to make sure there's a condition tied to the project. Otherwise you're, you're just going on words, right?
Right.
So, um, as a commission, you do have the right to add, modify, delete conditions that are brought before you. So if you.
When they first come.
Yep, when they're first in front of us. So, um, at that first project, if it looks like it's going to be some kind of phased thing and you're a little worried about them executing, maybe we do want a timeline tied to, you need to bring this back within two years or it expires, you have to start over.
Or the, the other example, I'm going to go back to 725 is, okay, he's approved for converting 17 motels to apartments. That's great. So he wasn't held to any sort of other standard to complete the smaller triplex. It's like, well, if he doesn't get that done, at least we've got the conversion accomplished, right? Or there's the, hey, we're going to allow you to do this, but we want you to get to this, you need to get to this next level. But we're going to put some conditions of approval that say, you need to have approved plans within a year and a half or something. And then make that condition towards your next step. So, so those requirements can come in and be held to potentially, you didn't meet these next phases of our conditions of approval, we are going to modify your existing conditional use permit because it's all wrapped into one, say you're now not able to operate.
Yeah.
I don't mean to pick on the talk.
It's a recent example. Yeah.
It's an example for me, I guess I can.
I'll give you an example.
Well, can, can I just, and I, and I want to hear it, but.
Go ahead.
So basically, because they did tell us what their plans were good because that wasn't a part of it. There's no way, there's nothing there. What we approved was what we have right now and if they decide to do anymore, they will come back. So all of the rest of it was, didn't really matter.
Yeah. Correct, yeah. So unless it's part of that project description, part of that analysis, part of that condition, yeah, they, they can come up here and kind of present some fluff.
But they did, which, and I'm not trying to be.
Yeah, no, and that happens not just here, it, it happens in other places. And, and so, yeah, as the commission, you kind of, like she said, keep it within the scope of what we're looking at because things can get brought in from the public or from whoever that starts incorporating things outside the control of the applicant or the control of the staff or people. So, you know, it's just really good to keep, you know, a, a full boundary of what is the project that we're looking at today.
Because I think what happened was they kept coming before, but they still wanted to please us, but they kept giving us more and more, but we really didn't have any.
And that, and again, I'm going to go back to our previous plan.
Again, I'm not trying to.
Oh, no, no, there's, there's, I, I think it was presented in a way that wasn't the clearest to you guys at that moment. I think, you know, regardless of the conditions of approval and the final legal standing of it, I didn't like that being a part of that presentation really at all because it's, to me, there is no key to it. So why are we examining what could have been happen at a future date if we're not going to have that requirement?
Exactly. There wasn't even a picture.
It's the there and now, you know, and it's that, that site layout of a future building kept making it into the document and I stopped doing that. That is not the consideration here. The consideration is for the mobile food truck. Clarifying, now we're thinking very capable hands that those, those issues won't come forward and be way more straightforward for the applicant and the planning commissioners as well.
Yes, everyone to do their job.
Staff want to paint the clearest picture on both sides, right? There's, that's, nobody wants to mislead or think this is going to happen because that's just not good for anybody.
Yeah.
So, uh, but unfortunately that one was, was pretty, pretty muddied up, um, throughout the process.
My example is the church across the street.
Your church? I mean.
Where I was. We brought our plans in and they were approved. They went through the planning commission and everything, but nobody ever suggested that we also include the bell house. So when we decided to add that on, we had to come back through the whole.
I remember that because I was pro bell.
There were people who were upset and we had to hire a sound engineer to come and say how loud that bell rang. And it would have all been okay if we had included that on our.
In the very beginning.
And, uh, that's why I say it's better if your applicant brings everything in.
Yep.
Yeah, I say good, like planning 101 as a planner, I want to get a really down to the nuts and bolts, what is your project description? Let's get the full scope and scale, everything in that project description early and upfront. That will help inform our review cycles and, and the other folks and agencies we rely on to provide feedback. So that's just probably one thing I think Harris does really well is drill in, like what are we reviewing? Let's get our arms around exactly what your project is.
Well, I'm really thankful to hear that.
Yeah.
Part of it because, I mean, I feel like already the information we're getting, we are getting is more.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, good. Okay, good. Yeah.
It's one more small example, just because it's very close to like he said, and we just went through it, was the, a very small minor change of a waste container being out in public, but that's not what was approved and it's a giant dumpster in public view in a downtown area. It's not like, we're going to go through that process of the, remediate it and then make it, but because you said you were going to do this and you're now doing that, we need to go back to the planning commission and have that approved.
Right.
Right? So this is another tacos and campos example where when things, you know, are slightly off, um, and let us go after this, but our other, our commissary and our other mobile food truck, you know, we have conditions of approval that they got to replace the sidewalk, right? And they need to do with that whole concrete slab and landscaping. So recently we got plans that didn't include all of this. And it was kind of, this isn't, we don't want this piece real together, have, oh, well, we got our stuff done. So it's like, we need to see these on those plans. So we're really trying to be that at different let stages as it comes through, incorporating all these conditions of approval through our building permit department and our building inspector as well to say, not just passing the 2022 California Building Code, this plus all these other things. Um, and so I think there's a little disconnect in the turnover in the last years and we're really trying to, I've been tracking when things need to come back. There's my pat on the back.
Good job. Full star, Joe. One step at a time.
When I was on the planning commission previously here in Willoughby, there would be new homes built in the city limits and they would come to the planning commission and want to be exempt from putting sidewalks in. And I saw numerous times, the code said you put a sidewalk in when you build a new home, but the planning commission would often say, no, you don't have to do that. And so we have this catch work sometimes of no sidewalks and sidewalks. And in my mind, if that's the code, I need to follow unless there is a very good reason. Most property owners don't want to do it because of the cost. Well, that's not my problem.
Yeah, I, I've been told many times over time, pretty black in life. I think that we need to follow the role.
You need that on a planning, you really do, uh, because it's a conversation we're doing up there and people can change their minds or we compromise.
Well, if we start doing that, then I start questioning why we have a planning, or just saying do whatever.
It's probably not going to happen a lot, but I was just giving that example, uh, in a sense of power that a planning.
So I feel like we covered a lot of my slide here already because we did a lot of discussion about conditions of approval. Yeah. Okay.
Something said earlier that we bring in something else from another meeting, Joe, just because I'm private, it's helping me to understand.
Yeah.
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 Plenty of them to work off of these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's moving forward, a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. So when projects are brought before you at the planning commission, those applicants are given a list of conditions of approval that they then have to go forth and go do in order to exercise their permit. And in a way, we kind of see it as like validating that they are now using their permit as approved. So like with the taco truck, I'm sure that there were like conditions of approval for like hours of operation. So they have to operate within those parameters. And if they don't, then it would come back to planning commission to discuss how to modify that. Or like with the sidewalk, someone would get approval for their house. And so they're allowed to go build it, but now they actually have to go construct that sidewalk. So that's what those conditions of approval do. Um, also in those conditions of approval, if the property owner doesn't agree with what planning commission said, they are allowed to appeal. They have 10 days following the approval from planning commission and they're allowed to appeal that to city council. And then it would ultimately be city council's, um, decision. But that is an opportunity for the, um, applicant or for, um, a neighbor who may be in a disagreement. The planning commission may have said, we do approve this project. And then the neighbor says, I don't like it for whatever reason. And so they could appeal it to city council.
Doesn't have to be obligation to both of us to understand why the planning commission rules the way they did.
So as staff, we do go over, um, all of the findings and the reasonings that, um, planning commission provided, um, and in an appeal, because it is at that point, planning commission's determination, that is what we're bringing forward in the appeal. So it is outlining all of the reasons why planning commission made the decision that they did. And then city council can ultimately make the decision that they choose.
Yeah. To add to that too, just, I mean, the city council is going to want to follow kind of facts and findings and the code. I mean, they do have some subjective power to override and make decisions. However, then once an item can appeal and go to a council, then it can be open to a legal situation. So they have to exercise all their appeal rights before it can go into litigation. So they have to exercise all their appeal rights before it can go into litigation. And then that's where, you know, whatever the city council does could end up in a court. So they do want to be careful as far as like, you know, exercising too much free will on some of these decisions, right? Because it all could be subject to litigation later on and the city could be sued for not following proper protocol procedure. So, you know, that's just basis to cover. I don't want you to think the council just has free rein and they just make decisions willy nilly, right? Like, they want to make proper decisions as well, but they are a different kind of body than the planning commission. So there is a distinction, but I think in the grand scheme, if you look at it, everyone's going to be held to their decisions in the event that it went to a litigation situation.
Absolutely, yeah, we're here for this, yeah, this is perfect.
Something I never understood.
Yep.
So the whole marijuana, maybe for the planning commission, we set the boundary of where we wanted it. It went to the city council, they agreed with that. Then the next thing I know is that the city council changed the boundary. And I don't understand why or how that happened.
So, so the.
I totally lost on that one.
All lobbying.
They, you know, sent it, sent it to planning commission, so we'll go back to 2017. I wasn't here, but this is when the original ordinance was passed, the planning mission. Sorry, city council passed the marijuana ordinances, they amended a little bit. They sent it to planning commission for recommendations, but we don't even boundaries. When we, when we brought it back, they wanted to have planning commission kind of act in that same role again and consider it and then bring that recommendation of the planning commission or the city council.
We did and they agreed. The first time they agreed, that's why I don't understand.
What, which, which time, Sherry, when it was out?
Well, it's been since I've been on the planning. Do you remember it the same way? We, we voted, we cut the boundary, you know, like we didn't want it too close to schools.
I believe it kept it the same at a thousand feet from.
But then, and then it went to the city council. They agreed, voted the same way, whatever. And then, maybe a month later, it went back to city council and they changed some of the areas.
Yeah.
And I don't understand why, why they could do that. Because they had already voted with, in support of what we said. Do you remember that in this way?
You can always go back and change your mind.
But I thought that once you vote on something, that's why I'm trying to understand that you don't get to just change your mind.
Well, I think, I'd have to go back and listen to it exactly, but so we brought it back and I think there was a vote on where, hey, we're going to keep it at a thousand feet and, but we're going to reduce some of the.
Reduce some of the, next to some of the.
Yeah, the qualifying, you know, areas that it can't be. And then, but I think there was, we came back and said, hey, we're still, here's, here's how that thousand feet looks with these new areas you defined. And it's still very limiting to the, the zones that we were looking at before, right? So it didn't open anything up potentially. And there was discussion back in Forsyth. They did keep coming back as an item for consideration, with it eventually landing on the 600 feet from schools and.
Which came back, so just came back, it went to us, it went to them, they agreed with us and then it went right back to them within a month.
Your, your real question is, is it illegal for the planning commission to bring something back and change their minds?
No, we, no, that isn't my question. Because my question is, we, we discussed it and the majority, and I don't remember if it was five or four, I don't remember what the vote was, but the majority of the planning commission said that we agree with these, these boundaries. And then those boundaries went to the city council and they said, we agree with these boundaries. That was the majority vote. And then, I think it was a month later and it was during the summer, if I remember correctly, the city council then decided that they were going to change those boundaries.
Yeah.
So it wasn't, it wasn't like over a period of months, it was boom, boom, boom. And that's why I was like, wait a minute, this was just decided. And we, we agreed with one thing, they agreed with us, and then the next thing I know, it's a whole different call.
So is this land use designation go or the changing of the zone? It's going to be, so just like we did with the multi-durisidation litigation plan, we would take the resolution with the sample ordinance and you would make that recommendation to adopt to the city council. With that recommendation, so it's a recommendation via a resolution to the city council to adopt the ordinance. The city council, and I get when you're talking about a different thing on changing of minds, but as a director, I'm wrong on this. But this would be a recommendation from the planning commission, not a decision.
That they accepted, no, they accepted.
Yeah, and then they have, you go back and make, you know, whatever decision they want to make.
And why did they accept, why did they accept to change it a month later?
There is, it was decided that they wanted to relook at it and examine differently.
And so they had the power to do that after the planning commission.
We can bring it back, we can bring it back next week. If city council wanted to or staff thought, hey, we want to go back to, I think we, what we were hearing of staff was that, what we, what we agreed to didn't really get us where we wanted to be on our zoning requirements. And we want to work with this again and bring them other.
So it didn't matter what the planning commission.
It's a recommendation to the city council.
So it is.
Yeah.
Let me say it this way, generally, you want, in this case, your city council to support your planning commission.
Which they did.
But if the city council consistently overrules the planning commission, you're going to be looking for new commission.
Yeah, they go, oh, because they'll leave or they'll fire you?
No, you leave because you're going through a lot of work to make this decision.
The thing, yeah. And it was very difficult.
I mean, I've had it happen on the county level. We would make a decision and then the board supervisors would overrule. And you have to say, well, that's the way it goes sometimes and just move on. But if it happened consistently, I don't think most planning commissioners would hang around.
I, I would have understood it if they would have, if that would have, when it was appealed, they said, no, we want this. But the fact that they supported us and then a month later changed it, that's where I was like.
And I do just want to make the distinction on if it was a conditional use permit. Somebody appealed your decision to the city council and they make a, they make that call that we're going to, we're going to, reverse the decision and it's finally done.
I understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So just, just the recommendation versus.
No, we agree with you, but next time we don't.
Yeah.
That's what I.
And you still don't have a distinction.
But we will.
But not yet.
Yeah.
Wait till July.
And I, you never do.
Next slide is just to let you know that we're on part three and the final part. So we're just kind of going over legalities, what you can and cannot do in a legal framework. So the Brown Act is very important for any planning commissioners that, or any legislative body. The point of the Brown Act is to make sure that all business is conducted in an open manner. So it applies to any gathering where a majority of members of the body hear, discuss or deliberate on any item of business that could come before you. Exceptions to the Brown Act include any gatherings or private events, maybe where three or more of you may attend, but you're not discussing any public business. Those are exempt. Or if it's an open meeting where all of you attend, but it's already been noticed. Maybe like all of you attend a city council meeting, that would not be a violation of the Brown Act. But the crux of the Brown Act is to make sure that you avoid discussing any items that could be coming before you at the planning commission where there is a majority of you. Also, it is important to know that you're not allowed to poll each other. So you can't have someone else ask and say, what is your vote going to be? Or ask each other that, polling is not allowed. Quorum is when there is a majority of you. So tonight, we have a quorum because there are five members of you and three of you have shown up today. So we have a quorum and it's very important to know that a quorum is necessary in order for the planning commission to conduct business and make decisions. Because if we don't have a quorum, then unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to have a hearing. Just quick notice about agendas, regular agendas get noticed about 72 hours before the hearing. I think the goal is usually probably to notice it before that. Which I.
Yeah.
A special meeting, like a meeting like tonight, there is a 24-hour noticing requirement at a minimum. And then if it's an emergency meeting, then it would be a one-hour notice. After an agenda is posted, items that are allowed to be brought up may only be added if it's an emergency. It's a newly arising item that has to have immediate action or it's an item that has been continued. So if you have continued an item from a previous hearing and it's continued to a date certain, like you want staff to bring back some sort of item or issue on that project. And you say, we want to hear it at our next planning commission meeting, then it would not have to be noticed and it would just show up on that next agenda. More meeting requirements, just kind of the fun little law tidbits. Meetings cannot be held in a place that discriminates. So like this building, it's ADA compliant, it's open to the public. You cannot charge a fee for members to show up from the public. So this meeting also meets that requirement and then the ADA requirements as well. So the public is, does have a right to comment. There's two times when public is allowed to comment at a public hearing. The first is, as you know, on the agenda, the public comment period, we kind of call that the open mic. So they're allowed to come up and talk about any item that's not on that agenda today. It could be anything under the sun. It could be some item that they want you to hear in the future. So you can always put a kind of like a pin in that and bring it back to the discussion and put it on the agenda later date. Or the public may comment during that public comment period when an item is brought forward. So after staff has prepared our presentation and the property owner, the applicant has given their presentation, then it's open to the public for them to comment. I do want to say it is important for, well, we don't have a chair here today. But, but usually the chair would regulate how long members of the public can speak. Sometimes there's a two to three minute limit and this just allows fairness. So that way, everyone speaks for the same amount of time and so.
Quite a hour. But I think we're going to, we've got a little flippy three-minute timer. Maybe having something a little more visual that we can put out and just kind of set it for every public comment. Yeah, something, something that's very, hey, your time's done.
Sometimes you can put a timer up on the screen sometimes where they can see it and it turns reds. They know they need to stop.
Because we allow somebody to go 12, 15 minutes and then that person comes up and we kind of got to allow them to go as long as they want. You know, because we've set, why, what a precedent is, why did he get to talk forever? And then he cut her off at three minutes, so.
And also people talking to the fact there.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
And how many times are they allowed to come up? Can we set one of them on that?
They can just one time.
It should just be one time unless it is truly separate items or different items on the agenda, that kind of thing. But yeah, they should be limited to a set amount of time for, for one comment. I would note and I would encourage the public, if they're like, you know, three minutes is not enough time, put your comment in writing and submit it because we can take that, you know, written comment letter and they can also present. So they can kind of do a double take, if you will. If they want to really expand on their comment, they can put that in an email or a letter and send it in. That could be part of the record, that could be included in the staff report package. So you have a chance to digest, yeah. So, yeah.
Can we add that on before, you know, on the agenda where they know that if.
I think we, so.
Maybe in the script or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think there is.
Does it say it on that?
It says.
Like write in your comments to city clerk.
But we can add the three minutes.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It says it. Oral comments up to three minutes at this time.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is expand on that to say, if I have more to say, put it in writing so we.
It does, if you have additional documentation that you'd like to distribute to the planning commission, please mail it to city clerk 201.
Obviously, I don't need that.
Oh, no, it is set up and maybe.
You don't listen either.
Yeah, you kind of like, yeah.
So. And it really, it really is, yeah. And I think over the next one, especially if we get, you know, because we kind of, we address that, we make our statement. But even at me before the item, whoever, say, hey, we're kind of reining this in at this point. But I think a visual timer can set that on, right? And, but really it's going to be the chair that says, okay, thank you for your comment. And then, you know, the part about not addressing staff and addressing, they address you. And what we don't want is staff talking to them directly, right? We want them talking to you guys. You can ask me questions all day long, but take that information, you can ask them questions. Come back to me because we don't want to get.
Dialogue.
Ah, yeah.
Not in the, towards the.
You.
I thought I read this somewhere.
I would say that's more best practices. You don't want to get into this dialogue where, you know, now the, this public commenter had a chance to have a kind of back and forth with all of you. What would be better is if they said something of interest or intrigue that you want to follow up on, bring it back to the applicant or staff to say, hey, they brought up a good point. And then bring it to the, the people in the project, not necessarily have this like back and forth with the public commenter. But take what they said, incorporate it into a question that you can then bring up in the discussion, address the applicant, address staff, address. Like, bring it back to the, to the folks at the table.
Which I'm guilty of at the last meeting. That's when she said about, when I said that there was, that you didn't have to put it on Facebook and then I.
Yeah.
Said I directed that to her.
That.
Yeah, I felt preyed.
No, well, it happened. It's like, that's practices, right?
Yeah.
And I think I kind of want to add that if it's the applicant up there and you want to ask the applicant, we need to kind of get that valve in that we're, does the applicant have anything and then we'll open public comment up.
Yeah.
Because we kind of kind of, well, they'll come and speak during public comment. But letting you guys know, does the applicant have anything to say? And you know the applicant's there and that person, it's just making a public comment. And that'll help what I think you have, can have a lot more dialogue with the applicant.
Right.
Question versus the person that comes up to speak at my house, who's in the pre-interview, right?
Sherry, I would say it's very difficult not to respond on Facebook. But I think as a public official, we can't.
Oh, I do.
No, I don't know who did or didn't, but, oh, you saw it?
I just saw, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's, I don't know what I said, but basically I was just saying that I thought that it's, why are we being so negative on Facebook?
Yeah, I've had negative comments made on Facebook about me when I was.
Oh, it wasn't even about us, it was about the city.
It was about decision supervisors made. And if I answered, I felt I was fueling the situation. So as much as it hurt, I just.
Oh, I did.
Didn't answer and it stopped.
And that can happen in person and I think whoever's chair, that is sort of their role and responsibility. If there's unruliness or inappropriate, I mean, they have the right to ask that person to, you know, take it down a notch or, or, you know, or you're going to be asked to leave. So they do have to control the room. I've been in really high conflict hearings and people have a lot of emotions and they come and they're yelling and they start threatening and it's like immediately we have zero tolerance. You leave the room if anything like that goes down. So as a chair, you want to command the room and just ensure that, you know, that kind of behavior isn't tolerated or allowed to go on, so.
Yeah. Great, we'll kind of round things out. These are going to just be some kind of general reminders, things to keep in mind, best practices. So as a reminder, public comment before you take action on the agenda item, you know, you definitely want to make sure you've addressed anyone in the room before you make that motion. It's good to hear all sides of, you know, who's there with their opinion. No action shall be taken by secret ballot, like Amy was saying, we shouldn't be pulling ahead of, ahead of time or taking recess and talking in the back. You don't want to get involved in violating the Brown Act in that way. And this is just a little snippet on beware of emails. Sometimes email chains can turn into kind of the daisy chain of, well, I did reply all and now it's a majority of you discussing an item. So you just want to be very careful in your written communication that can all be public record requested. And again, if we got a majority of you on a reply all and you discuss an item or start talking about decisions about an item, you can get into a hairy situation. So beware of email, pick up the phone if you need to talk and don't talk in a majority about the project, just be aware.
That's why we basically see everybody, but if you're going to file, well, whatever.
Yeah.
Do that, so that's our practice too.
Thank you for saying that your emails and your phone can be subpoenaed to look at it. I, at the county. I, at the county, all of the supervisors had their phones looked at.
Yeah.
Because there was some controversy, and they were fearful that we were texting or emailing in between, and we weren't.
Right.
I made it a point to only talk to them if they were present or if they were phoned them.
Right.
And because anything that goes out on the internet is going to be public. And that's hard, because.
We rely on it so much.
Well, we do. We rely on it a lot. But you just can't do that.
Yeah.
Anybody else can, but public officials can't. He can, I don't know. Yours isn't as public as mine, as ours would be.
But you could get a really savvy community member who, "I want to PRA everybody," and then I get a whole, you know, so that's maybe a whole nother training about public records requests. Yes, we, definitely good.
Tim Prue is good at all that.
Right. Next.
Yeah.
Okay, on this one, talking a little bit about legal and procedural responsibilities. These are just some reminders. You know, follow the rules, be mindful of the Brown Act. Keep that in mind as you're, you know, discussing amongst yourselves outside of, you know, the actual hearing. Be mindful of the process. We want to make sure everyone feels like they've had their right to due process. So make sure you do give the applicant a chance to speak and say their piece. Make sure you do give the public comment opportunity their three minutes. We want to be mindful of parliamentary procedures. And then also, you know, it's, following state law is not an option. So you just want to keep that in mind.
I, and this is important, I think, especially with the Brown Act. I had an incident occur in a meeting, and I was quite confident the Brown Act had been, had been used. And I talked to county council, and he said, "Well, you can have it brought back for a correct and pure." I said, "Well, the answer would be the same. I don't want to go through it." And later, I was able to confirm that the Brown Act had been violated. But there was really nothing I could do at that time, because one of the supervisors involved was no longer a supervisor. It's not fun, but sometimes you just got to bite your teeth and move along.
Yep. All right, this is just some tips and tricks for preparing yourself for decision-making. Come prepared, review the material that we provide you. We will continue to improve those staff reports to really lay out the project description clearly, the analysis clearly, followed by a recommendation with the findings, followed by conditions of approval. That's going to be your typical thing. So take a look at those and think for yourself, "Hey, is there something in here that I'm not, you know, agreeing with staff on?" That gives you an opportunity to be, you know, specific and precise in making those decisions. You can make modifications. Like I mentioned, if there's one condition, you just don't like how it's worded. It doesn't make sense, or we needed to add something. You do have that opportunity to bring it forward with your motion. You know, you can make a motion to approve with a modified condition 13 to state X, Y, and Z. So just know that you have that ability and flexibility to, when you're making those decisions. Feel free to visit the sites when applicable. So if we know what's on the agenda ahead of time, and it's really important to understand the view shadow, the aesthetic, you know, on your own time, go check out that site. If it's applicable, it might help you in your decision-making. Meet with the applicant, meet with the community members, get a full understanding and breadth of the project. But again, do not forget the Brown Act and the due process. So do these things, but be mindful.
One of the things, when I was the chair a long time ago, I always felt it was necessary for either the applicant or their representative to be present. And one night, we were considering an item, and no one was there to represent the applicant.
Yeah.
We tabled it, or we continued it.
Yeah.
Russ Melkwest got a call the next day from the applicant and was royally huffed out. But they showed up the next time.
Great.
Because you have questions.
Yeah.
And if they're not there to answer.
You're just relying on, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Yeah. Exactly, yeah. All right, and just some additional things, set staff up for success. So that's like asking clarifying questions in advance. Sometimes it's good just to, if there's something wonky, to ask the right question crafted carefully, just to put it on the record. "Hey, staff, can you please clarify that this is a variance request for a five-foot setback?" You know, a clarifying thing just because maybe the way it was written didn't quite come across. So utilize those clarifying questions to make the record very clear. You can raise concerns in advance. Like we said, we'll work diligently to get you materials as soon and early as often. That way, you'll have a chance to digest and bring questions to Joe, which then can be relayed back to our team to provide an answer. And then be mindful of any burdens of your requests. Sometimes on the dais, you know, you might ask staff to go back and, you know, provide something or look into something. Sometimes those requests can be, you know, too much for a staff of two people. So just be mindful of the burden of your request. You know, we definitely want you to feel empowered to make the decision. So if you need that information or research done, absolutely. But if it's something above and beyond, just realize we have limited resources. This is a fun slide, constructive decision-making. So, you know, leave your personal opinion out of it. You're going to rely on the code, the objective, the data, the general plan, the consistency and compatibility. Now, there is some subjectivity to that. There's some gray, right? I know you like the black and white. So code is your friend. That's pretty black and white. But when you get into general plan and we talk about, is this compatible? Is this consistent? Well, there's probably a lot of words in there that can, you could probably make a case either way, right? So, you know, use this objective, clear decision-making whenever you can. And then provide solution-oriented feedback. So if you're just, "We hate this project." Well, that's not helpful. Let's give some constructive feedback and tie it back to the code. Like, "Hey, I'm struggling with how this isn't going to be an impact on the neighborhood. How is this noise or this operation?" So try to give a little more direction other than, "We just don't like this project." So that's just some tips there. And then lastly, just remember, you're representing your city. Be professional, be respectful to your staff and to each other and to the public. And, you know, we all know how to act like adults. So you're there representing the city. I'll leave you with some of these resources. One thing I wanted to point out, the League of California Cities, they do offer Annual Planning Commission Academy. That's generally held in March every year. Even if one of you can go and bring back that, you know, wealth of information, it's probably this times 10 as far as what you're going to get out of it. It's an academy that kind of trains you on these best practices, the legality, the Brown Act, all those items that we kind of touched on today in a more in-depth. So just wanted to point that out as a resource. We also have some links here in handbooks to help, you know, if you want to kind of explore better best practices moving forward. And then I think we just end on questions, so that's kind of what we had prepared tonight. I think we've had some great discussion, but would love to hear any more questions that maybe came up after hearing from us. Covered a lot of it, yeah. Yeah, that was a lot.
A lot of good discussion, Jerry.
Yeah, I think that was great to kind of have that in.
Excellent overview.
Great, great. Yeah.
I'll just add too, as we move forward with the municipal code update, and maybe we do, maybe do a meeting on this where we take a really good look at, you know, the general plan's pretty fresh, it's being adopted, and really getting an understanding of that, that top-level guidance document. It's going to help us build that municipal code to suit that budget. So I really want to get that to you, but it might be a good idea. We probably can't get to it before our July meeting, but it might be better afterwards to include that as a study section in one of our meetings in the near future, kind of all of us review it and talk about how that affects where we want to go with the municipal code. Feel free, prior to the July meeting, you're worth the long document, but you can find the keynotes and there's a link to the general plan and those things. And hope it's always and. Yeah, just a thought, you know, because this is a very fresh, comprehensive guiding document.
Do you see lots of changes?
It is, it opens up, you know, the general map doesn't have the kind of changes to it, but the guidance on where downtown wants to go, where those things. So subtle changes in what district is still there, and what districts are obviously those that we summed up. But one example would be the entryway district that we're talking about. It's overlaid in the general plan, but it's still part of our municipal. So do we want to shape, do we want to leave that as general commercial, which is a big area? Do we want to put special regulations on things to be above? We want to do those kinds of things. Yeah, there are differences, and we need to make our municipal code specifically fit areas that we want based off of that. Because down by A and D M where it ends on general commercial versus where we're at central commercial, how is that overlayed look versus the behavior of the general commercial? That's real look. So it does, yeah. And I'm getting more familiar with it too, seeing these things, like what a resource this will be to bring that, you know, make this code fit our general plan, but also make our code have specific things that we want to see within that.
Do you actually design what we see? What I mean is, like, you guys look at a map, and how does this come before us? How do you visualize what we can?
You guys could probably speak to this a lot better, but, I mean, the general plan update is a long, very long process. I can focus you, take a lot of feedback, and I'll let you speak to that.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, so the nice thing is you do have a recently adopted or amended general plan. So that's really going to set the vision and policy stuff. And what we got to use is that vision and policy and how do we turn that into the development standards in the code language that makes those visions become reality? So one example, and this is just to give you a tangible example. If you want your Main Street downtown corridor to feel like a pedestrian-oriented friendly, you know, if you want that feel or that vision is what you envision there, then we need to change the development code to reflect that kind of design and that kind of structure. So that might mean we require, you know, certain building forms and architect look. We want at least a seven-foot wide sidewalk with a street tree. Like, we're designing for pedestrian, right? That's the vision of that particular corridor. Now, if it's, you know, residential, we want to be very specific on how close we want these houses to be. How big of lots are we comfortable with? Do we want an area of high density? And how do we let high density be high density? You need to allow smaller setbacks, more height, things like that. So we can use that vision as a tool to then say, okay, what development standards need to be in place to achieve that objective, to achieve that design, that feel, that look, that the use, right? So we really want to incorporate mixed use on Wood Street. Or we want to be okay to say, hey, that could be a residential or a commercial. We want to allow that flexibility, but we want the design standard to be, you know, the same for both. So using that as a tool to kind of implement.
Go back a little bit on the general plan update. It's going to take in, it mentions things when it talks about the district and zoning with the downtown guide. So it has that kind of thing into it. Now, the Willow Municipal Code isn't going to have mainly those references in it, but it's going to be, you know, we can get in the code to kind of match that.
Yes.
So it's kind of like, make it the code of the legislative analysis. And maybe we change X amount of permitted uses, but we add different conditional. Like, oh, I don't think a healthcare facility, a gym should have to get a conditional use permit to be in this, and that's what it was in 1977 when it was adopted. Let's go ahead and bump that up to a permitted use, or, oh, that shouldn't be there at all. So you have a lot of discretion on.
Do you look at what you have?
Yeah. If you can go through these, then we're going to do our next few reviews. And, you know, highway, there's going to be certain examples of permitted things and certain examples of conditional use things when it comes to allowing those uses of that zone. And you, you know, when we're redoing the code, it was, does that match the vision of our freshly updated general plan? And/or do we think something now be allowed here that didn't? So that is that general plan that's got to use to define those examples. And of course, you've got your last sentence, or other uses with the planning commission.
Right.
Because you're going to only list, you can't list out everything, and as time changes, you need that.
Look at the Indian Health Center downtown. I think there were some, maybe a CUP on that. I don't remember for sure, but they have now bought both ends of the block. There's only two houses left. So it's going to be a mixed use for now, but they could buy those other two houses. Well, then you got to deal with the neighborhood across the street.
And if development comes into certain areas, and that's how these things change and get altered. And those are the difficult decisions, I think.
Yeah, that's when we talk about, you know, land use compatibility. When you have neighborhoods abutting, you know, busy commercial that's providing great economic support to the city, but you have some people who are getting a negative impact. So, yeah, and just to kind of mention that for the July hearing, I think Harris will be coming forward with some suggestions and some items that we've seen in the review and applying your code and looking at these projects. So we'll definitely come forth with some things for you to consider, but we're also there to really get feedback to go, what is it that you want to? You know Willow's better than we do. We know that. We're not the experts in the room. We want to hear from you. What do you want your city to be and feel like? And how can we have this code reflect that? So the goal of the July meeting is to provide you some context, give you some ideas of what we think would improve, how to streamline, how to make applications better for business and applicants and homeowners and builders, and to also incentivize more development where you want to see it. So, you know, where do you guys want to see that, that drive of developing? You know, do you want to see infill? Do you want to see commercial? All these things. So we're there to get information. We're there to also provide and educate as we can and really hopefully take all that information, go back to the drawing board, and hopefully come back with at least a draft that we can then manipulate and manage and finally get to a final thing that you can adopt. So that's kind of the grand picture there.
I think there has to be some direction, I think there has to be some direction that the judge has presented, otherwise, I mean, you'd be like walking in a house and having a yellow.
Yeah.
Sometimes pictures and images, I'm like, I don't know. Or speak, you know, however the saying goes, but I've been, you know, even on my own time, I try to do a little bit of research and then pick up some books here and there. Finding some small towns and whatnot. Sometimes, you know, answer some of the questions or.
It's definitely dry, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'll add this to this, with our planning decision, reviews that we're doing on the code itself. Some of it is Architectural Board of, you know, there's a lot of it. So we might just say, "Give us best practices, and let's look at that." And we don't dive into that in our meetings. But if you guys want to focus on what do we want to see in this area and that zone, those are smaller things. And I think that might be a better aiming point for us in the short time we discuss these things. Obviously, we'll talk about anything and everything. But don't be, I don't think overwhelmed on, wow, I'm not reading. You know, I get it, sign, our sign law is crazy. Do other cities do that? They could figure that out, right? We don't need to come with that. But taking that, that general plan, and I'll get you guys some materials and kind of an example of it, and hopefully I can do a deeper dive, and it'll be a pretty light June meeting, I think, that we'll be able to focus on this. You know, if you want to focus on the zoning piece of it, because that's important to you, you can have, we'll have the majority of the discussion on that, because we've got this general plan that we need to get ten plates into our municipal. You know, so don't feel like you need to do deep dive into everything. I think focusing on zoning and comparing with what that general plan is now state. My zoning, we don't have big major zoning. Here's the allowed steps. Here's what you need a conditional use permit for, and then here's all the stuff. So they're not overwhelming off the gears. It's zones that you care about. About entryway, I want to really discuss that. But I think that kind of narrows the scope down, because it is pretty.
That's a big undertaking.
Yeah, before we, you know, even get to talk to them. So I think picking the areas that are important to you and focusing on that will make it not so, oh, gosh, a million things to look at. I'm not going to open the page on it. It's tough, I learn every day.
Yeah, I just wanted, I pulled up a slide here that this is for a separate thing, but I just wanted to show, because you're like, I'm visual. So what would be an example? Like, how could, how could we transform an entryway district? This is not Willow's, obviously. This is just an example of like what I've. This is just an example of like what a downtown first street currently looks like, you've got four lanes of traffic, you, you kind of got some signage, you kind of got some trees. Go ahead and go to the next slide. But, one up, yep. One down, there it is. Okay, same street, new zoning code, new development standards. We reduced the amount of, we didn't design this to be a thorough fair for cars. We incorporated more on-street parking, we made it more pedestrian friendly, we provided more landscape strips and buffers, we made it more of a, of a, a place you want to go visit. It's not a place to drive through or, or stop, but you wanted to, you know, I want to see what's, what these shops are all about. So this is just a good visual of like what I mean of how could you transform something? You could use your code as a tool to say, hey, we, we need streets fronting the, the, we need buildings fronting the street that engage the pedestrian, that bring people in. So just kind of night and day difference, if you can see like that. The first one's sort of designed in a, you know, maybe not a thoughtful way or meaningful way. This might not be every street in Willow's, but if you want, yeah, if you want, if you want one street, if you want one designated corridor that's like, this is the hub of the community and what is that vision? How do you make that vision come alive? You, you implement something to, to encourage design to meet that. So, yeah, that, that's just the visual, because you said that it's hard to understand how does the zoning make the change? It's that, it, it can really help with driving that, you know.
Most communities probably don't have a state highway coming through part of the town.
That's part of your challenge.
Makes it a, a challenge. The other thing I wanted to say is, and I don't know how unique we are, you might be able to address that. And Joe mentioned that we are an architectural review board as well as a planning. Chico has a separate architectural review. So I don't know how common it is in small cities that those two are meshed together.
You're the first I've seen. Yeah. Most are separate, some, some have, you know, a whole historic preservation committee, a design review committee, a planning commission, depending on the scale and scope of the, the city and how many applications they get. Again, I don't, I think that makes you unique and maybe that's something we could explore of how, you know, maybe the code needs to have a little more objective design standards built in to help you make those decisions. Maybe the architectural review findings and things that you need to make are just so vague that we just need to really hone in on, in these zones, this is what we want, we want that first street look, right? That's what we're trying to achieve, how do we get there?
Well, for me to, if, if we're going to continue as an architectural review board, it would be important in a document to separate the planning portion from the architectural review.
100%.
Not put them together.
100%.
Because in the past, I'm pretty confident they've just kind of mashed together.
Yeah, so it's very good to distinguish a use permit that you're reviewing for the, the use and intensity versus the design form of whatever it is they're proposing, so.
That's a great example of something, you know, for the July chance meeting that we get out there and you go, is this common? You know, on the, on the really over the top stuff, you look at it and you go, wow, that seems really over the top or different. Hey, we want to ask them to see, is this a standard practice? What do other places do? What, this has got to be a problem.
I think that's what the design needs to be supported.
You're going to be looking at the aesthetics.
Colors, materials, the style.
The whole color thing.
That's like turning down.
At the time, yes.
Turning down our water buildings.
So, Sherry, when we.
That was probably the city council.
Oh.
So this would be, you guys have been, so because we don't technically adjourn to the architectural board of review.
No, we just call it, yeah, so you'll see a design review application.
It's part of.
That's the architectural review committee.
The lady will take it, she'll takes our code literally, right? Okay, tell her that this is, they need to, you know, drain watering, this is pretty over the top.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But maybe in the wrong direction. Maybe you do want specifics, but maybe we need to like reuse the appet.
Tear out a shrub, you're supposed to get it. You know, so there's some things that just seem really over the top, but we definitely want to have standards on new builds and what we're looking at. It's just what, what are best practices on this standard? How stringent do we want to be? They can help us get. That's what they, they'll, they'll research and, and check out and then at the end of the day, they, they like it as is, we want to change the justice here, we want to eliminate it, anything we can.
Hopefully you got some food for thought.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
You're so welcome being here.
Good. That's called meeting return. Oh, yeah, we need, we need to actively adjourn the meeting.
Yes, thank you, guys. That was great.